Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 15, 2007. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We do have a quorum with all members of Council present. Under communication, I have one item I would like to share, and I think a couple of Council members may also. This is from John Kattowski to Ray Hazlett. We have been copied on. "Ohio University believes that the entire corridor along Richland Avenue from 682 to Union Street needs to be looked at to address vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic in this very busy area of the community. Because of the importance of looking at the corridor, Ohio University is willing to participate financially in this effort. I have had several discussions with the university's leadership about this, but we have not been able to identify funding, and I am continuing to work with the leadership on where to budget this effort. We need to reach agreement on what commitment the university should make. I think that the city should show its support for the study of the entire corridor by participating financially, and not only the intersection at 682, but also for the northern portion of the corridor. That said, I am convinced that we can make a major commitment to the corridor study." Signed, John Kattowski. So we'll pass that along to the Streets Committee. Member Wile, I believe you have a communication?
I have a communication to City Council from Martin Rose Deekus and neighbors. It's dated 10/15. "We request that the sunflowers and tomato garden be allowed to be grown in the front yard of 37 Brown Avenue, now in the future's years. Yellow flowers feed the goldfinches and bring beauty to our neighborhood; the red Mexican sunflowers attract hummingbirds and monarch butterflies. Cherry tomatoes are sheltered by these flowers and bear thousands of fruits which are shared with our neighbors. This front yard garden has been flourishing for over 10 years. The Athens City Code Office is requiring that garden be cut down by October 25th. The Code Office has told us that City Council could allow us to continue the sustainable garden now and in the future if approved. Otherwise, it will not be allowed. Thank you for your assistance." This is signed by 20 people. This has to do with a couple of people receiving weed letters in the past month in the neighborhood, and some of them have gardens in front, some of them have sunflowers, and hence, they may look messy at times. As I say, signed by 20 other neighbors.
Thank you. I am also in receipt of a memorandum from the Athens City Planning Commission. I'm just going to read the last sentence of it. "The commission voted 3/0 to recommend that the language which limited the use of the parking garage for B-2D commercial purposes and businesses only within the 500 feet of the garage not be added back to ACC 23.08.01F." I think we were already aware of that. Is there any other communication that anyone wished to share? Reports and communications from other elected official. Law Director Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to indicate that I'd like to request Council to expand the executive section that's on the agenda from just pending a threatened litigation to add labor negotiations and real estate matters also tonight. I also had an interesting communication to my office this week that I wanted to share with Council and the public, and a suggestion for Council. It's an email that came to me that referenced dog ordinances, and it says, "I hope you'll be willing to assist me. I'm with the 501(c)(3) Pit Bull Rescue in central Ohio. I'm trying to update our database regarding safe and legal placement of approved pitbulls throughout the state of Ohio. It's been rumored that pitbulls are banned in Athens. I've read through the city ordinances that are listed on your website. Find no mention of pitbull ban being in effect in Athens due to a pitbull ordinance above..." Do you have a pitbull ordinance above and beyond that of the Ohio Revised Code? If so, would you email it to me? And I had to reply that we do not have a pitbull ordinance. I am suggesting that we do one pretty quickly, quite frankly. I have some language for you that paraphrases the pitbull ordinance that has been approved by the city of Toledo and has been through the Ohio Supreme Court and upheld as constitutional in the Ohio Supreme Court. This particular pitbull ordinance is fairly short in nature. It would limit people to maintaining no more than one vicious dog as defined by Ohio Revised Code Section 955-11, which is pitbulls. And we require anybody that exercises or walks a pitbull or a mixed breed of pitbull to securely muzzle the animal when it's in public. It would contain a fine of being guilty of a first-degree misdemeanor, which is up to six months in jail or $1,000 fine. I'm suggesting that Council consider doing something like this fairly quickly unless you want it's proliferation of pitbulls in the city of Athens.
Let's pass it along to City Services. Nancy, what you handle with? That's your next meeting.
That's all you get. Can I have your question or should we save it?
Let him think. Okay. Were there any other communications? Member Bishop, you had a question?
No, I can save it for committee.
Okay. Mayor Abel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many citizens may have received in the mail the citizen opinion survey. It was mailed mid-week. Most people probably got it Friday or Saturday. It is done with the city's blessing. It is a comms class at Ohio University that conducts us for it. We haven't done it, I think, in two years. It's about the 13th of those that we've done. They wish me to publicize that in the survey, they have a deadline that you are to return them by Wednesday, the 17th. They wish to extend that to Saturday, the 20th. So if you haven't got it... They would prefer to have it by the 17th. I think if it lies there too long, it tends not to get done. So please do fill those out. And if any Council members wish to be present at the presentation for that, I think it's during finals week. If you could be here in Council chambers, just contact me or Melissa, and I can tell you the exact date and get you on the invitation. Also, as you may have noticed, the court street lighting was out from the courthouse percs. That's west side of the street. A garbage truck going through one of the alleys hit the conduit that goes to the box. I'll rip that out. We've contacted the garbage company. They've contacted an electrician. It's going to be about a $1,500 repair at their expense. I'd like to get them on. I talked to Andy today by weekend, because it is an inconvenience. You're used to a lighted street, and it's not lit, and there is not really just the other side of the street to do that. So in case any of your constituents ask you about that, that's what happened. Also, a reminder that on Wednesday, the 17th, will be the first public meeting on the Richland Corridor, which includes the replacement or redecking of the Richland Avenue Bridge over the Hocking and reconfiguration of the intersection with Richland and 682. That's it.
Questions for the mayor?
Where's that meeting?
The Dairy Barn.
Dairy Barn.
5:30. City Auditor Kathy Heck.
No report.
Okay. Under ordinances for third reading, 08907, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 41 Site Plan Reviews. This has been introduced by all members of Council. I believe Member Phillips will speak to it.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 08907. This ordinance creates Title 41, which sets in place a site plan review process for buildings other than one and two family homes, and there are a few other exemptions in there. It's something that we owe thanks to a lot of people for helping to develop this and improve it. The hundreds of citizens who helped develop the comprehensive plan, and the steering committee members, and our consultants, the planning commission, and, you know, this is one of the recommendations that comes out of our city comprehensive plan. And I also really want to thank Mayor Abel and Ray and all of the members of the planning commission, Jennifer Simon and Larry Payne, all of the folks who came to the task force meeting and really went through this line by line by line. I know there are a number of citizens who participated as well. I think Chris Nysley and Muriel Grimm, Joan Krenansky, Chris Paul, Brent Hayes, Dave Panich, Mark Szeza, and Lance Rep. I think that all of you helped us find things. I hope I didn't leave anyone out. It's likely that I did, because a lot of folks really did give some input to this. And I think that we've created a much better ordinance here, and this is something that should help us consider and bring into the sunshine decisions that are made, so that we can improve developments as they come through.
Motion second to adopt ordinance 8907 for their discussion. Member Patterson.
I have a comment and then a question. I do appreciate the work that went into being sure that the people who were concerned, especially concerned at the beginning, reached a point that they were comfortable with this document. And I know I've heard on several occasions from folks at the chamber that they truly appreciated that process, as well as the planning commission. My question is, how do you see the procedure for if we wanted to alter the checklist, add or take away something on the checklist?
I would think that we would amend the ordinance, although the way it's written now, the Service Safety Director has the discretion to, you know, put in writing if something isn't necessary for a particular site. So, you know, I think if we wanted to require additional documents or additional studies, we would probably have to, you know, add that. But if there's something that isn't necessary, if it's an expansion of a building that's on a flat site, for example, there would be no need to come up with a map with the topo lines on it.
It isn't anything that lofty that I'm thinking of. My concern was, we're in discussion about percent for art, and so if that became a part of the checklist process, would that require changing the ordinance, or could it just be...
I'm thinking that any general requirement like that, if it would pass, would have to be, you know, the zoning code and subdivisions, and every place that would be affected would have to be amended. And I would think this would have to be amended also.
Okay.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 8907?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. 7/0. Ordinance 11307, an ordinance authorizing preliminary and design engineering of the Richland Avenue Corridor. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11307.
Second.
This ordinance does exactly what the title suggests. It authorizes the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts for this preliminary design engineering and to expand up to $200,000 to study the Richland Avenue Corridor, which at this time, we define as including Richland Avenue 682 intersection and up to President Street at Court and back to the intersection where University Courtyard enters Richland Avenue.
Further comments? Member Bain.
I appreciate whoever got the promise. And I wanted to clarify that we are paying $200,000 plus $350,000 for design and then $350,000 for construction engineering. Is that correct?
Yeah, $350,000 to four.
Okay. Oh, so $350,000 to four on that. I'm looking at old figures. Okay. And the other thing is that, and I hope that you would put this in the minutes, that I think that if there is discussion of expansion beyond the radius of right-of-way, that, you know, there would be consultation with the Council pretty quickly on that, so we don't end up with a right-of-way problem where we have to do a swell. I trust that that will be in the minutes as part of our situation. My third question, comment, is that several people have written to most of us about their concerns about that area, and I would urge those people who have written to us, I'm thinking specifically of a former Council member who wrote to all of us about codes run and the problems associated with those, that they would start to show up at these meetings that we're having, and have a Danish or whatever, and actually put their... That was flipped. I didn't... And I meant it. But these people who have written to us, I hope they go to the meetings and express their opinions, because their opinions about this area certainly need to be registered by something other than those of us who are Council members, and I hope they do go. Are you listening, Jim? Do it.
Other comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, Member Sands.
I just want to comment that the meeting that Councilmember Bain is referring to, I believe, is the one that was announced Wednesday evening at the Dairy Barn, and that is exactly part of this preliminary study that we're talking about.
Yeah, we need the greasy wheel, the squeaky wheels there to get some grease.
Member Patterson.
I know that some people in the community have expressed concern about the amount of money that is being put into this corridor, and what about my street, and what about my street? And I think that we need to look at this from the standpoint of Richland Avenue is one of our major corridors. We have addressed a lot of the issues on Union Street, Columbus Road, and East State Street, and Richland Avenue is really the other major corridor that has not been addressed. And so it's kind of finishing a total plan, other than that, yes, we know we've got lots of streets that need attention, but this is one of our major city corridors.
Other comments? Member Wile.
And to back up what Carol's saying, is that the studies previous in 1990 has, you know, stated that this is a problem intersection, and anybody needs to just go over their bridge, and they know that's a problem bridge in terms of the surface. So these things need to be done.
One more time, Member Bain.
And I would also like to thank Andy and the other members of the administration for starting to look into the issues that we talked about when we first brought it out about the neighborhood safety problems. We don't have to just do Richland Avenue. I'm happy to see those other things are ongoing and starting from a dead stop. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11307?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11507, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Jack Alvis, owner, Alvis Auto Repair, 188 Columbus Road, to allow a portion of a new parking area to encroach into the city right-of-way. Member Phillips.
Move adoption of 11507.
Second.
This is a pretty straightforward request for use of the right-of-way. It's actually a very wide right-of-way out there, and we don't anticipate needing to use it. And they also did cooperate with us about the utility work that we've had to do out on Columbus Road, so it seems like a pretty straightforward request.
Member Bain.
I'd like to also have the record show that this is not just... This is specific to this property, because we do have a pump station in the vicinity, and so we wouldn't expect to see this for every property along that road, but instead, this one is specific, as outlined in the ordinance.
Member Wile.
And again, it's a 10-year revocable license in Section 3, so this will be reviewed sometime in the next 10 years.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11507?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11607, an ordinance amending ordinance 12906, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. This is introduced by all members of Council. Member Phillips will be speaking.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 11607.
Second.
We have been working in recent years to try to get all the application fees and things like that into one ordinance, so if they need to be updated, they're all in one place, and they're not all over the code. So this is just adding the application fee for Title 41 Site Plan Review, which is $100.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11607?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Under ordinances for second reading, ordinance 10707, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Columbus Division of Police and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, at this time I'd like to...
Member Bain.
...move to consider 10707 under suspension of the rules. The reason for the suspension is simply that we revised the ordinance so that it was in effect in time for Halloween, and we've all heard about the fact that we've not gotten our officers out on the streets. I mean, we have X number of officers. We have many more demands, and this will help further.
Other comments on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 010707.
Second.
010707 is a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Columbus for exchange of mounted police. There are different rules we've talked about before, spelled out, Halloween being different from other times, but we'll appreciate the additional officers in our depleted ranks.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10707?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11707, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of an approximately 29.94 acre tract on Door Lane. Ordinance 11807, an ordinance designating the zones for the annexation area on Door Ordinance 11907, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately 45.612 acres filed by Athens O8 LLC, Holzer Clinic, located along East State Street. Ordinance 12007, an ordinance designating the zones for the annexation area proposed for the Holzer Clinic along East State Street. Ordinance 12107, an ordinance accepting the donation of a 1981 Porsche 911SC for use as the dare vehicle in the police department and expressing the appreciation of the city of Athens, Ohio. It's hard not to smile at that one, you know? Ordinance 12207, an ordinance amending ordinance 13405 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code and declaring an emergency. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12307, an ordinance approving the final plat of the University of State's High Point Village Planned Unit Development Phase II and granting a variance. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this ordinance approves the final site plan for Phase II in High Point Village. We talked about this in committee last week. We actually talked about several different projects. The reason that we do not have the other one, the subdivision, is that it needs to actually... The plat needs to sit on the table in the Council office for 14 days before we read it. So we will be bringing that one up later. This one is just the PUD for that Phase II of High Point Village.
Further comments? Member Wile.
I would point out that there's a variance from 210512, Table 5, in terms of the cul-de-sac length over 1,000 feet. I was aware that there are some concerns about safety issues up there, and therefore, this is something we should think about when we do something like this. If the cul-de-sac length is over 1,000 feet, that can be a safety issue. I just mention it as a notation.
Other comments? Ordinance 12407, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dump truck for the Water Department. Member Bain.
Mr. President, we talked about this a while ago, and there was some question of where the TAF fees were going. I think we got that sorted out, and next time I will suspend, so it'll be on the same time for you. I'll ask you to vote for suspension.
Other comments? Ordinance 12507, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance has several items happening in Section 1. The first is appropriating from the unappropriated balance of the general fund $7,624 and some cents to the general fund. This is for the Public Defender's contract for the remainder of 2007. We talked in committee about the county is going to change our contract from a fiscal year to a calendar year, so this is simply appropriating money to pay for the remainder of this year. We'll have a new ordinance in January to deal with next year's costs. Second part, $7,000 to the general fund, 101,351. That's the Code Enforcement Office. There's been some discussion in Council, and I think it's some issue in the newspaper about some costs involved with certified notifications that need to go out to landlords regarding landlord tenant letters. And so this puts in $3,000 for that postage, an additional $2,000 for supplies applying to the postage and other supplies needed in the Code Office, and $2,000 to pay for additional gas, fuel, and vehicle maintenance until the end of the year. It authorizes $18,800 to the Water Maintenance Fund to fund the payroll until the end of the year. $9,000 to Water Maintenance Fund, transaction class 200. I'm not sure what that is. The auditor or the mayor, can you tell me what that particular notation is for?
It's a combination of a couple of things. Part of it is in the fuel oil cost, part of it is in the supplies that are necessary to do the different repairs to the water lines that keep breaking, which causes the higher overtime cost.
Okay. And then the next one is $40,500 to Water Plant Fund payroll, again. $59,800 to the Water Plant Fund, 200, 300. I assume that has to do with...
Electric primarily.
Okay.
About $40,000 of it, I think, yes.
The water purification plant, it's all electric, so there's been a large increase in the electric bill. Again, $27,000 to sewer maintenance for payroll, $5,000 to Sewer Maintenance Fund, transaction class 300, again...
Professional services.
Professional services here, which would be just...
Well, sometimes contracts, maintenance, people come and do work.
Like repairs or something?
Pardon?
Repairs or something?
Yeah.
That we don't do ourselves?
Well, it usually happens when our backhoes only go down so far. If you need extra shoring, it's better to just go with the contractor that does that rather than put our employees at risk.
Okay, thank you. And the last... Well, no, one more. $27,500 to the Sewer Plant and Payroll Fund. These are increases due to... Mostly to overtime due to being shorthanded in several of these crews, as well as increased demands on these crews. So these are amounts to fund the payroll till the end of the year, amounts that were not budgeted, because we weren't expecting these at that point. And last of all, $5,000 to the Sewer Plant Fund, transaction class 300, which, again, would be professional services.
Member Wile.
Is this anything we have to suspend rules on, or no?
Not at this time.
So we could maybe discuss what's going on here next time?
We could do that in committee. I will be announcing a committee meeting.
Does there seem to be a pattern here?
Yes, there is.
I figured it out.
I think she broke the code. Further discussion on ordinance 125? Ordinance 12607, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st 07. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is the Public Defender's contract that we just spoke about, the cost of that. We have already budgeted. Because this contract has always occurred on a fiscal year instead of a calendar year, we have appropriated money...
to enter into a contract with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st 07. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this is the public defender's contract that we just spoke about, the cost of that. We have already budgeted. Because this contract has always occurred on a fiscal year instead of a calendar year, we have appropriated money in two halves of this. So we have already appropriated some money to pay for the remainder of this year. We increased that appropriation in a previous ordinance. This is simply approving the contract until the end of the year. Again, we will have a new contract, a new appropriation in January for the new calendar year contract. Just cleaning up the contract for the end of the year.
You might indicate it's about $138,000 per year.
Yeah, $68,000 for this half.
Yes. I think we talked about, we mentioned that in committee, but that's a different point.
So it's from July 107 to December 31st 07. So we are a little bit lax in bringing this along, or?
We just received the bill last week.
Okay.
We would normally, it's billed semiannually, but in quarters. So instead of, we received semiannual payment at the beginning of the fourth quarter. So we will get it taken care of.
Okay. Other comments on ordinance 126? Ordinance 12707, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the state of Ohio through the Director of Transportation for the safety project to improve geometrics and widen existing roadways, including Richland Avenue Bridge at the intersection of State Route 682 and Richland Avenue in the city of Athens. Member Sands?
Mr. President, the title pretty much explains this, but there is a whereas down there that says, whereas it is the mutual desire of both Ohio Department of Transportation and the city of Athens to have the city serve as a responsible lead agency for the administration of this project. This LPA agreement gives the city the right to oversee the project rather than hiring an outside firm to do that. It also allows the city to receive federal money for this project through the Transportation Equity Act of 2017. Two important activities happening here.
Other comments? Member Bishop?
I was going to say, now, this may seem pretty obvious, but I just want to state it. Because the study, the engineering and design study will look at traffic flow, et cetera, et cetera, right? And then, you know, this talks about widening Richland. But the study is going to look at, you know, flow of lanes into, you know, one or two lanes, et cetera, et cetera, right? That's the purpose of the study. So that we're not just widening the bridge, we're looking at the whole. Just want to make sure that that's the case, right?
Right.
All the way.
Yeah, it's two separate grants being merged together.
Right, but this is a grant for construction, the other one is the study.
No, there's a grant specifically for, which we received about two years ago, for Richland and 682.
Right.
And then we just received, oh, within the last two months, the one on the potential widening of Richland Avenue Bridge and redecking of it.
This is not-
So we're merging these two projects because they all really need to be done at the same time.
Right, but this traffic study is going to feed into this, right?
Right, it'll do the, it will lead to the preliminary engineering, which may have then some changes to the grant application and project.
Right, okay.
Member Wile?
I sat down in one of these meetings with Andy and the ODOT people, and it's an overlap of, this is just not a study for traffic study, but also goes towards design. And then the continuum, of course, is design and engineering after that. So you have, when we say study, it's just not counting the cars. It's also saying, okay, how do you want to put a design together?
Right.
Okay. So there's a blend in there, just to say study is-
Right, but I just wanted to make sure that they were working in conjunction with it.
Further comments on ordinance 127? Ordinance 12807, an ordinance authorizing and approving the payment of prior year expenditure and current year reimbursement of tuition expenses previously approved by the mayor and/or service safety director and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, after you've said all that, I would like to consider ordinance 12807 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
One of the things that was read in the title of this is approving the payment of prior year expenditures. When we are approving prior year expenditures, we usually suspend the rules because these are payments that have been made previously, and we're simply approving that.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 128?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 12807.
Second.
This ordinance authorizes the payment for some tuition reimbursements that were approved by the service safety director for an employee Candy Bradley, who was the service safety director's secretary in 2005 and 2006. And it also approves current year tuition reimbursement to the Director of Streets, Andy Stone, whose name you've had heard mentioned here. And he is going to school, working on completion of his-
Master.
Masters degree in engineering.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 128?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 12907, an ordinance authorizing and approving the auditor's previous payment and renewal of the note authorized by ordinance 0806 to meet city obligations in the sewer fund. Member Sands, can you explain this one for us?
Mr. President, we had some discussion earlier in the year about a note that was due for renewal or to be paid off, a note that we had gotten from Hocking Valley Bank to meet obligations in the sewer fund. The discussion was that we would pay down what we could and then roll the note over. The auditor did that, paid down $10,000 on the loan, $9,900 of interest on the loan, and so then created a new loan for $265,000, just a continuation of a prior loan. And this happened in June after our discussion, but before we passed an ordinance. So we will be passing an ordinance we don't need to suspend right now, but we will pass an ordinance, hopefully, approving this expenditure and paying it.
Further comments on ordinance 129? Ordinance 13007, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. I thought we did that once already. Member Sands?
We're going to, Mr. President-
Oh, good.
And on this one, Mr. President, I would like to consider ordinance 13007 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
We talked, well, in previous ordinance, we talked about approving some funds to fund payroll till the end of the year. The sewer administration fund, payroll fund is going to be in a negative immediately if we don't authorize this. So we need to suspend these, suspend the rules so that we can make the payroll for this department.
Further discussion? Member Wile, suspension only.
Well, the reason for suspension, is this again due to overtime? Is that what we're hearing?
No.
No.
This is the one where I did the, there's two things really in it. One is the coding where I only budgeted for a water meter reader for eight pay periods instead of 26, by just an extra letter in my Excel formula. And then the second of it is there's two people in the utility billing office. I had budgeted, and the most senior of those that also has a higher pay rate in, I think, longevity, and my budget is water administration. And the other one, that's a lower paying, in sewer administration. And they're actually being paid just the opposite of that. So that contributes toward it. So it's those two areas.
They correct some errors made in the budget, which are only showing up here at the end because money has been expended, and now it's not there. And we realize that they-
Further comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending on 13007?
Aye.
Opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 13007.
Second.
For the same reasons we suspended.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 13007 has been adopted. Ordinance 13107, an ordinance closing a portion of West Washington Street between Court and Congress from noon on Thursday, November 29th 07, to 8:00 AM Friday, November 30th 07, for the art market and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson?
This was discussed in committee. This is to coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce Tree Lighting Evening and to move the art market adjacent to the wagon rides up on Washington. It's for one lane to be closed, and the parking meters there be restricted. It will not interfere with the flow of traffic to the Sheriff's Department, and this has been discussed with the police department and the Chamber of Commerce and the Streets Department. Everybody's okay with it. And the reason for the declaring emergency is the date of the event?
Well, we need suspension.
Okay.
Further discussion on ordinance 131? On to announcements and other business. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I would like to know, I asked Paul behind Bojinkas back, and I'd like to know what we should be doing about Roastikus' garden? Because it seems that there is a silence in the code about, I mean, no one would call cherry tomatoes weeds. And, you know, I guess I'd like to have the landscape people give us some insight before they make a rip out of cherry tomatoes, maybe a month of additional time before they freeze. You know, so I guess I wonder what the hurry is. You know, and what happens if they declare war next on lilac bushes or something like that, you know?
Well, and we had a bit of a discussion on this in chambers before coming out here on what is a noxious weed. Paul, did you want to talk about that discussion?
Actually, there, I did talk to Code about this earlier, and about two weeks ago. Their take on it is that they actually hold off till the first frost, and then they'd like to see it cleaned up. But whether we can actually grant, again, really, we do have to look at what noxious weeds are. I've had feedback from a member in Granville has the same type of yard that's kind of woody and woodland-like. And, you know, when, his take on it, of course, is that I know what the plants are, but how do you define it? Personally, you know, Rose has mint in her front yard, cherry tomatoes, and sunflowers. And of course, sunflowers are past their prime now, so they don't look the greatest. But at the same time, I would, I think, you know, you could start saying, well, it's obviously a noxious weed, it's poison ivy. After that, you can, you can have a spectrum.
You can argue it over.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have lived in communities that had defined what noxious weeds are. So, you know, I, it's a Pandora's box. I kind of hate to open, but I'm not too sure. It doesn't need at least discussed in committee. And so I would-
I could bring it up in my committee. I plan to have one next week. Also, I know a tree commission had a meeting about what constitutes bamboo. Since it's technically grass, and when it's over eight inches, is that a problem, too? It's an invasive species, and most people would look at it as a weed. But there are many people who like the stands, and I think it's pretty, so.
And I raised it on East State Street.
Do you ask the clerk to send a quick note to Code and say to them that we are going to pursue better definitions in the code and to let her-
And I sure would.
Let that garden go till the frost.
I think that would be a real good idea. And hopefully, maybe somebody from Code could be here to help us frame the debate.
I mean, we're not going to debate it because we're going to go to the tree commission and-
Okay.
And ask them, or the landscaping commission, we hope.
Well, actually, it's a shade.
It used to be the shade tree, I think it's landscaping now.
Okay.
Still the shade tree commission.
But it will be discussed in committee. So anyone that's watching that has opinions about this, this would be a great week to get them to your council members, so. Member Bain?
Tap fees for my committee, city services.
Okay.
Probably miscellaneous.
Jim?
Mr. President, I'd like to schedule a finance and personnel committee. One of the things we'll talk about is ordinance 012507, all those amounts. Also, we're going to begin council's discussion of the 2008 budget. And I do have a little sheet here that I'm going to pass out for council members to be looking at before the committee meeting next week. Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk about a committee meeting next week? Any other, I'm sorry?
Environment's down already.
Environment's down, yes. Any other announcements? Member Patterson?
Arts Parks and Recreation to discuss, a follow-up discussion on percent for art.
Member Wile?
One of the items on the environment committee is Mike Cooper's going to come and give us a small report on the wellhead protection, the activity. We've hired him for the, for that area, just so you know.
Okay. Any others?
I have an announcement.
Well, announcements and other business, so.
I just wanted to add that we have two new buses, and they're on the road. So perhaps you have noticed them. Someone asked at the last meeting, what's happened to the buses? Well, they're on the street, as of last Friday. And we were able to get two for the price of one, so.
They don't say Montana or-
They don't say Rocky.
Whatever, Rocky Mountain National Park or anything in there.
Nothing like that.
Who missed those?
They're very, they're very attractive, and I think they'll serve us well. Actually, I've asked for pictures for council, so I'll keep nagging for those. And, what's your name? Amy asked me about the bike racks. To my knowledge, we don't have them at this point. But there is a transportation meeting Thursday morning at 10:00, and that will be on the agenda.
Very good. Any other announcements?
I'll just re-announce, in case there's any late viewers, that the first public meeting for the Richland Avenue corridor is tomorrow at the Dairy Barn, second floor. Wednesday, Wednesday, 5:15, actually, I believe, is when it's beginning, informal. And there's going to be a presentation at 5:45. And the rest of it's informal discussion and just dialogue. So please come on Wednesday, 5:15, Dairy Barn, second floor.
And the last item before we go into an executive session is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak before council? Seeing none, but seeing quite a few students that generally have quite a few questions, we'll give you until 8:30 to ask questions, hold on to questions of your council members. But item number 10 on our agenda is an executive session. Do we have a motion to enter?
Move that we go into executive session through council?
Include?
Mayor, auditor, service safety director, law director.
How about the clerk? I'm sorry?
Purpose of it is pending litigation-
The purpose of the executive session, I'm going to let Law Director Honor go over his lengthy list of what he wishes to discuss with council tonight.
Real estate matters, labor negotiations, impending and threatened litigation.
All of that. So your council members will be working late tonight. Member Wile, member Bishop, member Bain, member Phillips, member Sands, Phillips, and then Patterson and Flowers. They all want to do it. When we come out of executive session, we only will adjourn. Thank you.